Good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, October the 15th, 2018. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask the city administrator to note the roll call with Councilor Briggs on vacation. Move to the agenda, and the agenda does have two additions under new business. Item number three, approving an application and permit for a temporary on-sale liquor license for Oktoberfest with the VFW Club at the Paul Walz Memorial Union Hall. And item number 11 is also an addition, and that's to appoint a candidate to the Information Systems Administrator position effective November the 1st, 2018. With that, council's pleasure with the agenda and the additions.
So moved with the additions.
Motion by--
I see the additions here in front of me.
Thank you. Motion is to approve the agenda with the additions. Discussion, please.
I might have overlooked it, but under opening bids on the first page of-- might be included that, as well as the two on the second page?
Yeah.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October the 1st, 2018. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Question on the motion or the minutes? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Regular minutes are approved. Thank you. Item number 200 minutes is the minutes of the public information meeting on the proposed local sales and use tax for the city infrastructure. Your pleasure with those minutes. Motion by Counselor Kraus to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote yes, motion is carried. Those minutes are approved. Thank you. Go to the resolution on the payment of claims and transfers. We have three transfers: to the general fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $9,951.67; to the permanent improvement fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $62,500; and to the reserve for capital outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, $25,760.42. Accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls, $491,462.53. Airport commission claims of $23,531.06; and library board claims of $5,019.32. Your pleasure with the resolution and the payment of claims and transfers.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the resolution: the payment of claims or the transfers? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and approve the payment of the claims and the transfers. Thank you. Go to the audience, and anyone in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council this evening. I'd like to hold it to five minutes if we can, because we've got a long agenda tonight, so--
Not long, wouldn't have thought.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring a proposal to the city council: the return of adding blight to the city council agenda. I propose that the department heads report progress concerning blight of the city, which would include commercial buildings, residential buildings, junk autos, trash, noxious or poisonous vegetation, lawn mowing, just an update every month how we are progressing. And I'd like to see if city heads, like the city attorney, I know Steve said they had something going on with the TV motel, on talking with the people, housing and building inspector, and the fire chief, also included in the proposal, the progress of rewriting ordinance on blight by Ken Anderson.
You're good, and we'll certainly consider that. If you want to leave that piece with us, that would be helpful.
One other question.
Sure.
What is the procedure on reporting blight?
I would say that if any of us, as elected officials, are contacted with regard to blight, we would probably move to have the building inspector or the fire chief who is a housing inspector, we would have them possibly even go with them and investigate. Most cases, myself, I will go out and verify what folks are telling me that they're seeing in their neighborhood. And then, and at times, I have written memos to the building inspector and the housing inspector with regard to issues, and I know that they are out there investigating these and many times make personal contacts. At times, they will issue written letters to individuals, so I know that there is follow-up on many of these. Other councilors wish to, as they have been contacted with regard to blight, how they respond?
I think that that's relatively accurate, the way it is. I think we could be considerably more proactive as a city, and instead of enforcing by complaint, enforce by ordinance, but we don't have the manpower to do that. We've talked about that at Budget and Finance in the past, having an ordinance officer that would just enforce city ordinances, and then, once it escalated to a secondary level and we needed to bring in the building inspector or the fire chief and take a look at it. But with that being said, I think we're all aware of the financial restraints that we have as a city, and we've tried to get it into the budget the last couple of years, but it just hasn't been successful. But yeah, I would have to agree with Mayor Anderson. That's where we're at right now, is we enforce by complaint, and it's not a good system. I'm going to be honest with you, it's not a good system. For every one person that makes a complaint on one of their neighbors, we could just as soon look at that household and find an ordinance violation on the house that made the complaint. So it's not a good system, and I'll be the first to admit it's not a good system, but with the financial restraints that we have as a city right now, and I think we're all very knowledgeable of where we're at, that's where we're at. So today, I would have to agree with Mayor Anderson that that is the protocol that we have, is by complaint, as us as city councilors or the mayor or administration hear of an issue, we definitely bring it up to the department heads or the person in charge of looking. And I don't agree with where we're at right now, but I also know that we just don't have any other leverage to move forward.
I would like to thank Bob for, or Mayor Anderson, for responding to my email, and Cynthia, and Adam for responding to my email. It was very positive, and hope we can move forward with that complaint that we have.
I do think, and if I may, Mr. Mayor--
Please.
I think that some of the frustration, I've said this before, and I think your initiative addresses some of that. A lot of it is communication and a sense that we're working on things and getting it out there. Will alleviate some of the frustration, it may not solve the problem, but at least it'll alleviate some frustration. So I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and your initiative in bringing forward your proposal, and we'll have to take a serious look at it. I agree with the mayor.
Please, or leave it with Ken. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Seriously, thank you.
Yeah.
Further, under the audience, anyone that's not on the agenda wishes to address the council at this time, and if not, there is another opportunity at the end of the meeting for a general address to the council.
Would you like to be on our housing committee? You would, okay. I'll call you.
Then move to public hearing, and the first item under the public hearing is the first reading of the ordinance of the fifth series, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3, Section 3 through 5, B and H, to establish a requirement for water and sewer bills to be in the property owner's name.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that ordinance.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw for the, have the first reading.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. And I assume there are folks that might want to speak to that issue at this time. And anyone that wishes to come forth that would like to speak to it, please. Good evening. Name and address, please.
Rob Tupper, manager of Hausmann Rentals. Got several phone calls, actually, to come up here today, and I have to say-- why are we doing this? Problem, or, I guess the reason I'm asking is because most individuals out there like to be treated as such. Apartments, mobile home parks, us doing the reads, making up a bill, sending it to the tenants is necessary. It's-- going down to-- address, gas company, electric company, garbage company, cable company, it's all of them. It's the individual that is tagged to the bill. What I see here is about another 70 bills ending up on my desk when the-- you have to consider that when a tenant, like any other human being, and that's where the difference being drawn here, they're all human beings out there, whether they're tenants or owners, doesn't matter. They take a certain amount of pride in paying their bills. Collection's problem, outsource. I have to, every other company out there has to do that part. Because I cannot be a collection agent. The workload that this would shift from the city office to my office is phenomenally changing what I have to do in the course-- necessity of this, and I guess-- other thing we see here, too, is-- doesn't pay a bill. It is up to us, the people that are sending them that bill, to be diligent and chase after this. If you're not getting paid, that is part of business. There are people out there that don't pay. I get that. Trust me, I get that, a lot. It's part of being in business, part of conducting every day. Fifting that responsibility just to whoever is next is kind of irresponsible in my eyes. Save my piece. Thank you.
Let me respond, please, in case there's some questions, Mr. Tupper.
Same, obviously.
First of all, I mean, I think it's your business. You own the property and you're renting it out, and so in some instances, the city becomes your bookkeeper or takes care of the operation with regard to servicing water and sewer to them. Is it efficiency? In some cases, it certainly can be, because we have some of the clients of rental units that we're continually after, they're continually behind. I believe that the ordinance states that there won't be a change unless someone is a problem, and I think that's how it's stated right now. Just to be sure, I would ask administration to--
So it would be done on a case point basis.
It would be, and so if you have a client that's there, and they're there for the next few years, and there's no, they're not a problem, they pay every month, it'd be no change.
Right, but it is about to change as soon as that tenant--
Yes, that's correct.
So eventually, through trish, there would change. This does change. And the final part of this is what I'm talking about here, is at the end of it all, it's still going to be what I was talking about. Okay.
Other members of the council that wish to comment, and then, question, please.
I'm not sure if the vision of this, once it's fully implemented, is going to entail all these different bills, because I think that we would consolidate them, so that you'd be getting one bill for your properties. You know, I mean, there are things we will do, we're not going to be--
Be able to segregate our addresses into individual addresses for tax purposes and everything else, and to keep--
That wouldn't help you if it was consolidated.
No, it would actually complicate things--
Okay.
--drastically, because then I couldn't tell who was who, or how to bill.
The other thing I want to say, though, is that ultimately, if the bill becomes, if it goes to the point where we end up assessing it to the property tax statement--
Yeah, that happens now.
Yeah, now. So ultimately, it does rest with the landlord.
Which is why I would like for it to stay-- I didn't get that one. But that, when we get into the end of-- Well, I have, myself, taken two collections or done with two in my account, take care of that bill. That I can handle at the end of the year. Half a month from this month, because I think massive property tax bill, too, which-- as far as doing this month for month on my desk-- a lot of paperwork. Every client that-- folder, and it is twice the size of a regular folder already. Water bill to every single one of those addresses-- that would make my job impossible.
Counselor Kraus, and then Counselor Droba.
Emma, Heather.
Yeah, and we'll get to Emma. Okay, go ahead.
As we had a conversation about this, I've been called by several landlords about this. I think one of the pieces that, and it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you, as the landlord and the tenant, can be on the bill and can each receive a bill, and I'm wondering, would it behoove you to get out ahead of it, say they're 30, 60 days, 90 days behind, would you? You don't know until you get assessed, so--
I usually go-- Emma does her job great, by the way, all the gals do down here. Every once in a while, it's not, it's super consistent, but every once in a while, when people get behind, I get a call. It would behoove everybody, you guys, too, if you include us in that, more sooner than that. People get buried by a $200, $300 bill, that's really buried to them, and that is almost impossible to get out from under. If we can nip that a little shorter and have the landlords involved in this, we can help you get paid. We already do this with the gas company, the electric company, you can call MPNL today and say my name, and they love me, because I get them paid. People will answer my phone call. They see it's the city and they go, "Duh," and set it aside. They don't want to talk, but they will talk to me because they have to.
And it's my understanding that the goal would be to put, we could put both of you on, so that you're receiving the bill, that way you know, okay, they missed a bill--
If I received a copy of their bill, that'd be great.
They can still go to their house, they can still pay it, it's just going to be the two of you together, so that you can get out ahead of it, because I would hate to have all of these bills piling up, and then, at the end of the year, like this check you've got, it might actually-- it might actually, that's the goal, is to get you guys-- the other piece is, it's a lot of work to shut somebody off, especially when it's like February, and it's in the middle of the street, and they've got to steam off, the shut off and everything, and then, an hour later, you get a call, and-- so it's just, it's, in conversations I have with other landlords, that's kind of the rationale. I apologize if I'm off base there, but that is the rationale.
He called me up, too. Thought about that, too, and I, there's some expense involved with this, but especially in winter time around here, it gets very-- the landlords here-- with that situation, and that's where that is cleaned off, ready to go. If you have a shut-off situation, you have to know ahead of time. Problem is, the notification is not in-- part of this. Without all of this, what I'm mainly concerned about here is the individuality of our tenants is just being thrown to the wind every time-- I don't hear. They are their own people, they can pay their-- a lot of them do. Some need some help with this. That you're not getting paid, and there's a gap there, and then you shut them off, but in that gap, somewhere there, something can be done.
Counselor Droba, and then the city administrator.
I just want to verify one thing, and I know we have Betty and Emma in the room. Are we able to send out two bills for the same bill? Like, one to the property and one to the landlord or the other, the property owner?
Do we know who the landlord is in all cases?
I haven't gotten there yet, but I just want to know, are we able to send out two bills to, two different, one bill to two different addresses?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think the answer to that is that there's a lot of properties that we're not confident or we're not certain are even rental properties, so we don't know if it's the property owner who lives there, or if it's a tenant. So there's a great deal of uncertainty with that, first of all. The, I could just jump ahead to my points, is that that's an important consideration here, because we're not certain of which properties are rental and which are not, and which are owned by property owners. And then, any year, we can have between 45 and 90 pass due bills that we send out and do hangers-on, shut-off notices for that in a month. Now, many of them will come in at the last minute and pay those bills, but we can have half a dozen to a dozen that do not do that, and we actually have to do a shut-off, and that goes to what Counselor Kraus was talking about, is that we can have a great deal of difficulty, and we can have a truck, a backhoe, and a crew assigned for half a day trying to do that water shut-off if we have problems with the valves and stuff like that, only to have that same tenant come back two days later, or three days later-- property owner, for that matter-- and pay it. There's a great deal of cost and expense to the city for doing that. Another problem that we've experienced is that when there are tenants in a particular property and they're approaching or exceeding 90-day shut-off time period, is they'll just walk from the property, and they're gone, or they'll notify the landlord that they're going to be leaving. Proactively contact the city to find out if there's any pass due bills, they pass on the security deposit, the tenant's gone, and then, all of a sudden, then we find out that there's been a change in ownership from the tenant or the landlord, or we have a pass due amount that can be hundreds and hundreds of dollars that ultimately, we will assess to the property owner. So the, part of the point for this particular proposed ordinance amendment is we want to make sure that the property owners take responsibility for this and are fully aware of whether or not their water bill is getting paid, so that they're not left unexpectedly having to pay a very significant water and sewer bill that has thousands of dollars or hundreds of dollars pass due, and it's being assessed to their property, and they have no recourse.
There's even a fee associated with that, once it gets to that point, I think, over and above, isn't there? Thought there was.
I think there is, there's--
Yeah.
I can't speak.
And I guess, if there's anything, we probably, as a city, are a little bit lenient, because I think we end up going out to, what, 90 days before we shut off? So someone's probably three months in arrears, or even heading towards four months?
Three months.
So we're somewhat lenient in that. And I guess, is this ordinance, and the way it's written, is it different than other communities do?
I think other communities, there's lots of different ways to approach utility bills. I couldn't speak, all the communities have out there, but I know-- probably over two years ago, we addressed this issue of pass due water bills, and did the city-- I was talking about the electric company or the gas company, and if you're pass due 30 days, you don't make payment, there's a penalty provision that you pay, and you pay in-- pass due amount, and that's another way to handle it, which-- enough for people to be more timely with their water and sewer bills, and we don't do that, as you know, when they're over 60 days delay notifications, and it can be over 90 before. We--
And I think, just to add to what the city administrator just said, is one of the concerns that we've had is we don't know who all the renters are. I mean, people that are in this room, we know your landlords, we're the ones who sent you guys the information about tonight's meeting. We know some of them, but we have a lot of houses out there that we don't even know our landlord, so how do you tighten up that timeframe when we don't even know that they're not the homeowner? You know, and that's part of the issue that we've had with this, is it was first brought to me a couple of years back, when we had somebody at the end of the year, had a renter that moved out, they didn't know anything about it as the landlord, and then they ended up eating a $600 water bill. We didn't even know that that was a landlord's house. We didn't know that they were renting out that property. So that's part of this, too, is we're trying to find out where all of our rental places are. And I think that we could alleviate a lot of the issues that you have if we are able to send out two bills. It could still be in the property owner's name, but then, you get a copy of the bill, and one goes to your tenant. Your tenant may be a responsible person, they come in and they pay their bill, it's no issue to you. But the ones that are getting overdue, that are getting later, as you go through the bills, you can see that they're 30 days late. That kind of tightens up the gap, and now you can go to those renters and say, "Hey, you guys are 60 days late for your water. We have a copy of the bill." So maybe this is a way to alleviate those concerns for you, and still fix the problem as they're getting their bill, they can pay their water bill-- as they're getting their bill, they can pay their water bill on their own.
Counsel Jackson?
I can see the wisdom in that. I can also see that it doesn't meet your initial objection because you're still going to get hundred and five bills, aren't you?
It's a matter of paperwork sitting there that I have to deal with, pay those bills, that would be.
That's the paying part, not the actual paper?
If it was sitting there and it's just a notification of it, and they're still responsible for the bill, I'm fine with that. The problem being is, is putting another person in the middle of payment. Being notified of delinquency would be fantastic. Guys, I'd love that. I really would. Thirty days and they haven't paid you, I, I would like to see something in two weeks after that, saying they still haven't paid. I can call. One of the things that I have, because we have so many, is we have to have a minimum of one year lease. On that lease, it says you are in breach of lease for stoppage or non-payment of any listed utilities here. You guys are on that list. There's my weight to go to that person and say, you are in breach of lease, and I will end this before it actually becomes a problem.
So to follow up.
I have, already, by the way.
So to follow up. If you got a notice, or if you got a copy of the bill every month, that isn't going to be enough for you. You want a special notice?
I want, I want delinquency out of here.
Oh, there's a different request then.
It would be nice. Guys, if they're paying you, let us know.
Counsel Kraus, please.
That goes back to we don't necessarily know. And so there's got to be a way, there's got to be a way to know.
I don't have, because I am an open book. You guys got everything I've got.
Right, but I mean, if you were together on the bill, we would know.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we sent out a hundred and forty notices for...
It, it was not that high. Emma, it was like eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, thank you. Okay.
So, there's, there's got to be a way to know. If, if there was, if we could, if you could both be, or if there's a way, we could still, we're still just talking about this, so it's not a...
No hiding out there.
Right, but you know what I mean.
Plus, we also have people that get into different situations. Just came up in Oklahoma, and they go, and make their house a rental overnight. And you will never know about that. And that can continue for years into the future. It's a friend of his or whatever, or, I'm sorry to say, but Customs Border Protection, they do this constantly because they lack housing. And they do it constantly. Good for them, at least they're taking care of each other, but you guys would never know. So again, I don't know, there's so much under the radar for you guys, I don't know how you catch that.
Counsel Drowba was speaking to, is that we don't know who are all the renters or landlords.
And do the, that would let us know. Because then, then the, right, because then the singular ones would start popping up every time this happened, then those can be addressed as are you or aren't you? And...
That's one of the pieces of the ordinance is that the current tenant moves, which is going to change their, their address or change, and then the utility bill's been shut off, listed delinquent for more than sixty days, disconnected for non-payment, or the city has a certified past due. So that would, if they change it, or if they move, then it would, that's where, then, then it would draw, that's where you would see. So you're right, eventually, so it wouldn't be, it's not a problem till it's a problem.
You know, the, the one thing I've always thought and it can be done, you can take the owners of property at the county and match it to addresses in the city water system and identify those pieces of property where the, the billing party on the water is not the same as the property owner. And then you can at least get all of those, but you will never get the ones where the owner is paying all the utilities with the renter. You're not going to get those.
Identity process, and that's what we're talking about eliminating this whole bill, is identity process here. These renters actually need to build credit rating, so when they pay their gas bill twelve months in a row, bing, they get a credit point for this. If it's in my name, they don't get nothing. I try to do that, especially for younger tenants that come in and see me first. Telling them, do not shift this, in the utility box they're supposed to be in. This has a constructive effect over the long term. And before they leave it in my office, they do understand that. Hey, if I pay my bills and I pay them on time, I actually get credit rating for this. If I miss one, then I lose one right away. But it takes twelve payments to get one. I better behave. So they, they do get this. And being an individual with your bills, you, that's the only way to get it, so.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Emma to come up, please.
Get out of the seat.
Sure. Thank you.
Got to warm you.
Thank you. Anybody else want?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Emma is an employee of the city in the water department?
I just want to give kind of some statistics and background as to kind of why so much extra work on our administrative staff, our public works staff overall. Currently, the state statute does allow us to charge the owner and certify unpaid property, or unpaid water and sewer property taxes. This past year, there were sixty-one properties on the pending assessment list for which were certified, and of those sixty-one, forty-five were rental properties. Therefore, we had to send two letters, two certified letters, one to the property owner and one to the renter. And we did that using, of course, like you mentioned, the, the county website. So just looking at that alone, that's an additional three hundred dollars in just postage, not to mention my time, Lisa's time, Betty's time verifying all this information, trying to make sure everything's completely accurate before we send out these letters. Then we look at the shut off list. The shut off list has approximately a hundred properties every month. And this is basically a, a three-month cycle, so you have a hundred, a hundred, and a hundred. Basically about three hundred people out of the twenty-six to twenty-seven hundred customers that are delinquent on the regular.
Almost ten percent, a little more actually.
Yeah, so, so you're looking at just those. And this past month, we sent ninety-five shut off letters, forty-four tags where our guys had to physically go out and tag each of the forty-four properties. And then we ended up with eleven shut offs today. Of those eleven shut offs, six were rentals. So it's, they spend more than, more than half the day trying to get those off. They didn't get all of them off today, from what I gather. And in the winter, it's much more difficult, as Counsel Kraus mentioned, with the standing and the different, different things that, that happened. And I think, you know, our city's time would be much better spent plowing the streets and making improvements. So with that being said, we did look into other cities that had this, that they currently require the property owner to keep it in their name. Of those cities, we found Albert Lee, Clearbrook, Clearwater, Eden Prairie, Franklin, Bridley, Menomen, Minaga, Morgan, Nevis, Olivia, and Wadena. Some of them are very small cities that probably could do it, they could keep it in the renters' name, because it's such a small population. Others are very large cities of, you know, like Eden Prairie, sixty-four thousand people, where they probably have enough staff to, to manage that, but they're looking to not do that because they have better, you know, better ways to, you know, set their time aside and do other projects and, and, you know, it doesn't seem financially responsible to spending, be spending this much time on managing rental properties. The number of properties that turn over every month alone are primarily rental properties, meaning I have to send our guys out every day on a handful of in and out readings due to people moving in and out of rentals, especially around the first of the month, obviously. And our fifteen dollar connection fee, I can, I can pretty much guarantee does not cover the cost for the guy to go out, get the reading, bring it back to me, me data, enter it, get all the property owner's information, the renters' information, whatever information I need in my system, in order to process this accordingly. Not to mention, the twenty-five dollar shut off, or twenty-five dollar penalty fee does not cover the time that's spent on the shut off list, and the twenty-five dollar reconnect is not sufficient for the time it's spent, sometimes hours out there, I've got the guys either trying to shut off or turn on a property, especially in the winter. So I just don't think in a time when we're looking at budget restrictions, should we be eliminating ourselves with things like this that are so minimalistic and so simple, but yet such a big thing in the big picture? When I'm calling up landlords saying, hey, you're, you know, trying to be a good person, say, hey, your renters, you know, delinquent, they owe, you know, about to be shut off, we don't always have the time to do that in, in the amount of time. When I have tags that say eleven o'clock, okay, we shut off at eleven o'clock, get it to my guys and have them ample time to get it shut off by three-thirty, but at the same time, give the renters enough time to make sure that, you know, we've sent the letter, we've done the tag, you've got several days between the tag and the shut off, and you still haven't come in, it just, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem really smart, to be quite honest.
Counsel Drowba, please.
Uh, two questions. The first one is the certified letters. Of all of the certified letters that you send out, how many do we get back?
I would guess probably half of them.
So we get, so we're sending out...
A third, half.
And so then, once we get the certified letter back, do we have to re-mail that again? No, we don't?
No. I mean, on occasion, if, if they come back with a corrected mailing, sometimes it'll say forwarding time expired, then I'll, I'll go ahead and spend the extra six dollars and seventy cents a letter, if I know that that's going to get to the correct person. But if I have no idea, I've done all this, I mean, and the time that I spent looking up, trying to find valid addresses for people that have moved out, that they haven't left of forwarding, because they don't want to be found, I don't, I don't think that's, that's worthwhile.
And my, my second question, you said that we had six turn offs today?
No, eleven turn offs, six of which were rentals.
Okay, so for those eleven turn offs that we had, how many were already called to be turned back on today?
Um, a couple of them didn't get turned off, and then they called and paid at about two-thirty, so it was kind of convenient that they hadn't gotten to them, but those two would have been called to be turned back on. One was shut off and was reconnected before the end of the day. But then there I am, calling my guys, saying, hey, can you get out there before the end of the business day today to reconnect that water in order to appease the customer?
So then my, my last question that I'm going to have is, these, these public works employees that are, are going out and turning on the water, shutting off the water, what would their daily duties be in, in the event that they weren't dealing with the shutting off and turning on water?
I think that would be better directed to Ted as the, the street and water commissioner, not, not I.
Ted, could you answer that question?
It's a lot of work, right?
Enough money to do.
And how much, how much of your, how much of your employees' time do you think is taken up by just shutting off and turning on waters in a calendar month?
That's five percent, twenty workdays in a month, five percent of the time.
That's just shutting off, though. I mean, it takes a solid day just to hang the tags for two to three people. Because, I mean, forty-four tags, not to mention my time to make the tags, ensure that...
Thank you, that, those are my questions.
Other questions for...
It's an ugly picture.
Thank you, Emma. Is there other property owners that wish to address the council?
Jeff Wickstrom, Wickstrom Rental Properties, I've been doing this for about twenty-five, thirty years. Couple of things that have come up that I was going to address and I can maybe help clarify a few things. I own rental properties out in the city of Rainier also, and the city of Rainier bills, the tenant sends a card, it's about a four by five card, to me also, and it says care of Jeff Wickstrom. So they are billing the tenant, but they're sending me a notice, talking about this notice that you keep saying and everything, monthly. So I can see when a tenant is now thirty days past due, and then I take care of it. I can contact that tenant, whereas in this city of International Falls, I sometimes don't know until that tenant's tag removed, and now they're ninety days delinquent, and today I went and paid a hundred and seventy-five dollar water bill for somebody from last year that I evicted because I didn't get notice.
Jeff, did, did, does Rainier send you a past due too?
Right on there, it shows a Mount Current past due, it's a little three by five.
But it's not a separate notice?
Not a separate notice, it's just a simple notice that's sent to me, and I would imagine it's probably less expensive to send that little postcard in the mail than it is to send an envelope with a whole eight and a half by eleven sheet or whatever. And they send one to me and one to the tenant. The tenant is the responsible party, I'm the one just care of, so that if there's an issue, I can contact them, which I do constantly. And it gets paid instantly once, like Rob said, once I'm communicating with my tenant, no problem. They pay because they are worried about getting evicted.
Jeff, what is the, thank you. Jeff, what is the process, say somebody moves out and you move somebody else in, how does that work in Rainier? So that, say the, you change, your, your renter changes.
Correct.
So you said it's care of, so how does that work? Do they...
The new tenant goes in, puts their name in, it still gets sent to me, and just all of a sudden, when I get the bill, instead of it saying John Smith, now it says John Doe.
Okay.
It just stays, the tenant is the first name and I'm care of Jeff Wickstrom below that. I know, it's, it's a postcard that comes in the mail. It's a very simple process, unfortunately for Rob, to get a hundred and fifty of them, but at least it's a postcard. Oh, that one's current, that one's current, oh, this one's delinquent, I have a phone call. He could weed through them fairly quickly and say, those are the current, here's the ones I have to deal with. And I, I've owned that property, those properties out there for twenty years, and every time that I have a delinquent one and I contact a tenant, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll take care of it right away. It's dealt with instantly. There's none of this, I've never had one of them say, oh, they're three months behind, we're now going to hand you the bill. It's dealt with instantly because I'm involved with dealing with it. That was one thing that, trying to help with you guys, when you're saying, how could we do this? Talk to the city of Rainier. I, I like that system, I think it works very well, maybe you can find out how they do whatever they do.
And just listening to what you say, it, in my opinion, that's what we're looking at here. It would still be in your name as the, as the owner, they would be responsible for the bill. We can have you as the, the liable party or the property owner, and they're going to be getting the bill. That, that's how I, I can see this working. I, I think it's important for us, beyond the water bill, to know who owns the properties that we have, that who's renting, and to make sure that we don't get into these positions where they're four months late, you know, and, and being closed down. So if we, if there is a way, and that's why I asked Emma if there's a way that we can do two billings, are you saying you would be acceptable to being the, the one on the bill, but they're getting it in their name? Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's still your property, we know it's your property. You get a, a note that says that this is the bill, and they get, they get one that, with their name, that says that's who's living on the property?
Mr. Mayor? I think we're splitting hairs now. We've gotten to this point, because I think when we started this conversation, what I got from Mr. Tupper was, he doesn't want to get all that paperwork. No, we want all the paperwork, we just don't want to be responsible for paying the bill.
He made that comment, at least.
Right. Now ultimately, you guys are going to pay the bill, if it doesn't get paid.
And that does happen, and I thoroughly, for twenty-five, thirty years, have not believed in that either, because the tenant was the one, let me speak my side. The tenant's the one that's used the product, they've used the water, just like they've used the gas, they've used the electricity, but yet if they use that water and they don't pay it, then I'm stuck paying for it.
We will disagree on that, but I, totally, we'll have an argument about that. But I do think, no kidding, but I mean, the city is not going to be liable for bills that you incur in running a business. But, right, no, no, wait a minute. So I do think that this, if we can simplify the process and eliminate some overhead and get rid of the certified mail and some of this stuff by doing the duplicate billing, well, hey, I, I think what the landlords brought forward here might be a viable solution.
Kind of bleeding off is some of what Rob also said, that if you start sending me the bills and I'm the one that's responsible to pay them, and then I'm going to collect them from the tenant, effectively what you're going to do is you're going to raise rent in International Falls, because I don't work for free. If you're going to hand me a bill that I have to pay for them, and I have to take my time, and I have to put a stamp on an envelope, and I have to do my paperwork, like you're saying about them, I'm going to raise my rent to cover that cost. I'm going to have a service fee for paying your bill for you if you're a tenant. That, you're, you're effectively potentially raising rent in International Falls, and I already hear from tenants, it's too expensive, it's too expensive. And we're one of the... And we're one of the cheapest communities to live in, but you hear from tenants, because of the clientele that we have to deal with, that this, oh, I can't afford it, I can't afford it, go rent from somebody else then, because I've worked really hard to make my properties nice, and if you don't want to rent from me, I'm sure somebody else can rent from me less than what I do.
Councillor Kraus, please. I think the, the point is, is that they're still going to pay it, and that, and we're okay with that, but we just don't know who the, I mean, ultimately, the property owner is responsible for the water bill.
Correct.
Which, you know, it, it puts it, it kind of takes some of that liability away, like, I, I'm hoping that there's a way, and I don't know if Emma can co-comment on it, that they could find, find out if it's delinquent. I mean, we're not saying that we can't send the bill to the, to the, to the tenant, and we still can, and they can still pay it. It's just that we don't know if it's a rental property or not, and this just feels like a way that we can find out.
Didn't Cynthia come up with the perfect solution to that? You can look on County Assessment's website, and from that you can tell who the owner is, and all of a sudden now, John Smith's the owner, and Bubba Smith is trying to move in, well, you're now a tenant, it's now a rental, it's that simple. It's completely clear.
And that's what we were looking at doing over time through, through this, this process. It wouldn't be an overnight thing, I mean, and, and that, that is ultimately what the goal is, and I think that the solution that we're all looking for right now is what, what you're kind of suggesting, is to have it in the, the property owner's name, have, have it on file with the city, who the property owner is, and if we can send out a secondary bill to the, to the renter, to, at the property address, I think that alleviates the, the issue. It's still in the name of the property owner, you would still be able to get a copy of the bill, seeing that they're past due or they're not past due, but on the flip side, they'll actually get the bill delivered to their house. Would that, would that be sufficient?
Kind of backwards of what Rainier, because I feel that they, they feel that the tenant is the responsible, and I'm just getting the secondary bill showing if they are or aren't paying, which allows me to stay on top of them. You're, you're cutting line, you're cutting, yes, just so we're both getting a bill so we can pay attention to what's going on, and they ultimately are responsible for paying, and if they don't, I know what's going on, that they're not paying, so I can go after them.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're going to be your best advocate for wanting to get bills paid, like Rob was saying.
Absolutely, because it comes down to you in the long run anyway, so I agree with you.
We have the power and the leverage to tell them, well, then you're out, and that's all I do. When I get one of these from Rainier, and you're 30 days behind, you have 10 days to go take care of that, or else I'm going to serve you an eviction notice, because like Rob said, we have provisions in our leases stating that if you're in breach of contract, you're out. It's that simple.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would think that this ordinance is maybe something that we should put aside. I would take a look at this proposal, and then I'd want to talk to Emma and Betty about what the impact would, if there would be, what I don't, I want, we need to alleviate 5% of our very valuable Public Works time, and, and something that really doesn't provide a benefit to the rest of the taxpayers and residents of this city. And so we really need to look at, uh, what this means, if this is a solution in fact, and if it will reduce our overhead costs in dealing with rental property in the city. That's the question, right? Will this work? Because if it does, great.
Make things work well, but I also, if I'm doing extra work, I'm going to pass it on.
Going to cost somebody, thank you. Anyone else that wishes to address the council with regard to this issue?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please, Councillor Drogba.
So, uh, we have a motion and a second right now for the first reading of this ordinance. In the event that, uh, we make some changes to it, uh, between this reading and the next reading, would we have to have a, a secondary first reading, or would we be able to, um, do the first reading tonight, make some modifications to it, and then have a second reading? I would assume not.
You know-
We can revise between the first and second readings, that, that's why you have two readings.
I don't think we need an ordinance. If all we're going to do is send out duplicate billings and still leave the tenant the primary responsible party, we don't need an ordinance.
I, I, I would disagree with that. I, I, because then we still don't get to the initial solution that we've been looking for of trying to find out who the property owners are, that, that, which, which sites are rentals and which ones are not. We know who the property owners are, but we don't know which ones are rentals, which ones are not, and I think that we still need to take a look at passing an ordinance like this.
Councillor Kraus, first, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Administrator, so my, my question is this, can we, if we vote and pass this, can we still amend it, or is it set as written? Because if it's set as written, I can't vote for it.
My understanding, my understanding of the, the ordinance process, um, is that, uh, we have two readings, uh, and that it can be revised between the first and second reading. Don't have the city, don't have the city attorney here to, to-
So we can, we can-
We could revise it.
We can revise this in between this reading and the next reading before we lock it in.
And, and we certainly can, um, I think there's a couple other avenues that's open to the council, we can table, um, at this time and, and bring back for the first reading. We could refer it to a committee for further, uh, research, so I think there's a couple of other options that are available to the council if they are looking for more information.
I still say that we don't need the ordinance if we're just going to do duplicate billings and maintain the, uh, I see Emma shaking her head.
I think we need something in writing.
Yeah, we would need to, we would need, but we need to find out if that duplicate is even possible before we pass this, in my opinion.
Well, that addresses the landlord.
So, if that makes sense, I would like to know if that's possible before we-
Let me, uh, city attorney, thank you for arriving, when we, when we have a question. And, and the, the issue before us is the, the ordinance that the city is considering under Chapter 3 to, um, amend our, our ordinance and have, um, the utility bills sent to the property owner. But the question that's before the council is one there, the, um, reading, the first reading passes, the, could be a revision at the second reading and still, um, it's still permissible to have a, have revisions at the second reading of the ordinance?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
I apologize, I was in court, just got through with a contested, uh, hearing, uh, upholding one of the arrests that Chief Madison's officers made.
Thank you. All right, further from the council, uh, where do we wish to go with the, uh, first reading of this ordinance? We have a motion and a second to have the first reading. You wish to, uh, have the vote on that? Do you wish to take and, uh, have a motion to table or a motion to refer?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I would like to move on with the, with the first reading, but I think it's incredibly important for us to get additional information between now and our next, next meeting. If we choose to, to, uh, to table this, I, I would be okay with that too. However, I want to get more information from administration on how we can do the billing. I, I do strongly believe we need to have the property owners at least on file with the, with the, with the building, and however we bill the customers, I'm fine with that, but we need to have the property owners in our billing system, in our, uh, in our, on our bills, however we do it, and I think we, we should move forward with the first reading and get more information between now and our next meeting, and we would ultimately vote on it for finalization.
What is the order? Because I'm, I, I think we should table it, because I think there's too much in here now that needs to be reworded thoughtfully in terms of what, where we've come to at, at this point. So I, I don't feel comfortable passing any of this without further discussion and research, so I'd like to table it. Is that in order to table, a motion?
Certainly, the motion to table is, the motion is always, to table is always in order.
You go ahead.
I, I motion that we table this until further discussion can be had with property owners and, and city water employees and other people.
Motion, and is it, uh, table indefinitely or to table to a, a time certain?
Table to the first meeting in December?
December?
Well, okay, what do you want? End of November? Second meeting in November? Next meeting?
Table to the last meeting in November, which gives us a, uh, but it also gives us a commitment, the whole meeting to discuss and talk to other people. Does that make sense?
Same motion, yeah, I motion that we table this until the second meeting in November.
I want to say, though, as a, as a second on his table, do you need a second on the table?
Please, yes.
Um, that in no way are we caving on trying to alleviate the overhead we're incurring in the city, in Public Works Department, and the administrative office, and managing rental property. We are going to have a solution, so we may come back to this point if we have to. I'm not tossing the towel in by tabling this.
All right, the motion, uh, is, uh, by Councillor Kraus, the second by Councillor Jacksaw, to table this to the second meeting in November 2018 for the purpose of securing additional information. Further discussion with regard to the motion to table? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried, and the first reading is tabled.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just for information, uh, that meeting will be on November 19th, uh, the third Monday of the month at 4:30 PM.
November, the, table to November 19th meeting in, uh, 2018. All right, thank you. Go to the-
Well, guys, we have a whole rest of the meeting. Hang out, it's going to get even more fun.
It's riveting.
Item number two under public hearing is the second and final reading of the ordinance of the fifth series, amending the Code of Ordinances, Section 9-20, Calendar Parking, and to amend the time of change, the hours from 8:00 PM to, to 12:00 PM midnight, it will now go to 6:00 PM to 12:00 midnight of each day, shall be the hours of change. Motion by Councillor Kraus to have the second reading of that ordinance.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the ordinance. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion is carried. The second reading of the ordinance of the fifth series, amending Section 9-20, has passed its second reading, and will now go to publication, um, in the legal newspaper. Thank you. Opening of bids or quotes, uh- With regard to the copier machine contract?
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator, please.
We received one, um, proposal last week, and, uh, we're expecting another one, um, sometime, uh, this week or toward the end of the week. We have some financial incentives that are built into the proposal if we take action by the end of the month, so we're asking that the council, um, delegate the responsibility to set the responsible quote for a copier machine contract for 60-month term. Um, the estimated savings on the proposal that we've received to date is about, um, I believe it's $450 a month, so it's fairly significant, um, but we do want to get a competitive price from another firm, and we only have one, and we expect the other company to provide something by the end of the week, so we're just asking that the council adopt a motion and delegate the authority to make a motion that's best for the city, um, sometime before the end of the month.
Is this only the one copier?
How many copiers do we have?
Is there one down at the city garage?
Yes.
I thought there was, yeah.
I was going to say, given that we have, uh, a trend now with rising inflation, it probably behooves us maybe to look at blocking in costs now, but, uh, that goes to playing the inflation game a little bit, but we're looking at rate hikes and prices going up.
And, and that includes maintenance and, and the timeliness of maintenance when you make that consideration?
Yes, absolutely, and warranty support work, service work, we're going to look at.
Counsel's pleasure then in, uh, delegating, uh, the decision on the copier contract to administration to take the best, uh, proposal. Motion by Councillor Jacksaw.
I do make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councillor Drogba, to have the administrative department accept the copier machine contract for 60-month period that's in the best interests of the city and the citizens of International Falls. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given to, uh, have administration consider the contracts. Thank you. Move to the consent agenda, and we have the approval of the 2019 license renewal applications. Um, those read, Brad Ettested Snowplow License, Domino's Pizza Restaurant License, Doug Wickstrom Snowplow License, Dairy Queen Restaurant License, McDonald's Restaurant License, MW Friends Incorporated Doing Business as Friends Garbage Service, a Garbage Hauler License, Mike's Odd Jobs LLC Snowplow License, Morin's Plowing Snowplow License, Pete Ham Food Service Incorporated Doing Business as Hardee's of International Falls, a Restaurant License, Rainy Lake Waves Massage LLC, a Massage Individual License, Sandy's Place LLC, a Restaurant License, Sarah Nevillean Massage Therapy LLC, a Massage Individual License, Snickers Concrete Snowplow License, Sound North Pond Broker License with the Established Business, and Up North Builders Incorporated, a Snowplow License. Your pleasure with the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with discussion.
Is there any that you want removed? Um, we don't have discussion on consent.
I, I understand that, that's why-
And so, if there's some that you want to-
Can I just make a point before we make the motion then?
Sure, accept the point of order.
Um, I, I just want to know if we have sent out with the snowplow licenses, uh, information on the rules and restrictions that we have for the city, as we have in the past, because we, every winter have the same issues, and I just want to make sure that everyone's knowledgeable on what the rules and restrictions are for the snowplowing.
Not plowing snow out onto the streets and, uh, not plowing on the brick sidewalks and all of those items.
All that information?
Yes.
When we send out the license renewal, the ordinance is enclosed, and then when we send out the signed certificate, we send more detail about what Harley is asking, the rules and regulations regarding going across streets and that type of detail once we send the certificate.
Thank you.
All right, so your motion then is to-
Accept the consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda, second by Councillor Jacksaw. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved, thank you. We'll move to, uh, new business, and the first item under new business, mayoral proclamation establishing October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, with the, um, local-
Friends Against Abuse.
Friends Against Abuse, uh, group.
So moved.
Requesting, motion by Councillor Drogba?
Second.
Second by Councillor Kraus to approve the mayoral proclamation and, uh, publish. Question? Question?
Aye.
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 Well, yes, motion is carried, and the proclamation is approved. Thank you. Item number two under new business is a resolution, uh, for a permit for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Kooching Aging Options on November 30, 2018, at the Baptist Community Center. Motion by Councillor Jacksaw to approve the permit.
All second with discussion.
Okay, by the way, I have tickets to sell.
Motion by Councillor Kraus, the second, discussion.
Does have a liquor license?
I think they have wine and beer. I believe that's it, um, but, and I'm not sure-
This is, this is Kooching Aging.
Aging, and is this the-
This is the logging camp, Chris.
Logging camp, day, yeah, dinner?
It's not Baptist, it's Kooching Aging.
Aging, that's getting- Aging, that's getting the permit.
I reiterate, if you want to go, I got tickets.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried and permit is approved. Thank you. Item number three is the addition to the agenda and that is to approve an application and permit for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for Oktoberfest, October 19, 2018 at the Bob Wallace Memorial Union Hall, VFW Club, Peter Graham Post, 2948. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes, motion is carried, permit is approved. Thank you. Item number four under new business is the approval of the 2019 license renewals that include tobacco and liquor applications. The items, County Market, a 3-2 off-sale license, cigarette license, gasoline pump license, and restaurant license. County Market Liquor, a cigarette license, and off-sale liquor license. Dollar Tree, store number 3694, a fireworks license. Elk's Club, club license, restaurant license, and Sunday Liquor License. And Menard Store, 3507, a fireworks license. Motion by Counselor Kraus to approve the license renewals. Second of the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion. Chief, have you had an opportunity to review the liquor licenses? I think there's only two in here right now for County Market.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
No issues with those, thank you. Further discussions or questions? And the same, I guess, maybe we should ask a question with regard to cigarette license too, whether or not, I don't know if we've conducted any audits of businesses with regard to the sale of cigarette licenses or cigarettes.
There are no known issues. No, we haven't had tobacco compliance checks recently, but I'm not aware of any reason not to issue a permit.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried, licenses that have been read are approved. Thank you. Item number five under new business is to appoint Deston Helgason as a part-time police officer effective October 16, 2018. Motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys.
This position fits into our budget for the year, right?
Yes, ma'am. We recently lost a vacancy within our part-time patrol roster as we received a resignation. Just fill in the existing spot.
This was part of the, he was part of the group that the Police Civil Service Commission had approved.
Beginning September, the civil, oral interviews with candidates for the position of part-time patrol officer, Mr. Helgason placed in the top three of that and after further investigation of the candidates, he was one of the, for position two.
Counsel Drowba.
There's a difference between the letter that the chief wrote and the agenda today. Is the effective date today's date, October 15th, or effective as the agenda says, October 16th?
I put the 16th on there because if it was technically the 15th, it would be effective at 12:01 today.
Probably doing it for tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you for that question. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, the appointment of Deston Helgason as a part-time patrol officer is approved. Thank you. Item number six under new business is a resolution for Public Employees Retirement Association Declaration for Deston Helgason as an employee of the city. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried and the resolution is adopted and Deston Helgason as an employee of the city is approved for public employees retirement. Item number seven under new business is to consider an easement agreement with Kooching County for a gate, security fence, and the use of a portion of the City of International Falls property adjacent to the transfer site. City Attorney.
Your Honor, the county has requested this and I think Matt Gwynn is here from the county, their environmental services officer, to pass any details. Did work this out. I prepared the agreement with input from Administrator Anderson and also with staff and I believe it protects the interest of the city and I would encourage--
Are they doing something different out there?
Yeah, you want to tell us about the need?
Sure.
So at the transfer station, we have a viewing deck. If you've ever been out to the transfer station, you go up the hill and go meet the attendants to discuss your loads and decide where you go. Off to the south of that area is a viewing deck where people go when they have demo or they have, you know, other materials that they're dumping. And right now, in that area that we're asking for the easement, we have contained. I found out about it. I said, well, we either need to get an agreement with the city for use of that property or we need to move that, those containers out of that area. And so when I suggested that we have to move those containers out of that area, the guys operating the transfer station said, geez, that would be really inconvenient because we have this viewing deck and we can see the loads from our viewing deck and we can see what people are bringing to and from our facility and that location, we can see them dumping it into those containers. Whereas if we move those containers to a different location, it's not as easily viewed, I guess. Asking the city to--
Counsel Kraus.
Can I ask what's in the containers?
We have, there's a container for demo, there's container for--
No hazardous paint or batteries or--
I'd like to negotiate a one item on the easement. A free trash day for the citywide cleanup.
Well, we do, I know that Wayne Fuller has donated his time--
Yeah, yes.
--on helping out the city in that, in that collection day. And I do believe it's a great, a great program that the city offers to residents and--
Appreciate it for his time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's indispensable to the success of that, Wayne is. No, seriously though, seriously. I think that, and I know that you're not going to make the decision on this, but the county needs to consider, were any county commissioners, needs to consider providing, let's say, a free brush day for everybody in the county and coordinate it with the citywide and citywide throughout the county, all the cities, make that available. But I'd like to force it with an easement.
I'd like to separate these two items.
All right, I'll back off, I'll back off.
If you would like to make that request, we certainly would present it to the county board and, you know, we could certainly have that discussion.
Okay.
Please.
Matt, is there, is there a plan to put in a security fence around the transfer site? Because as I understand, we're the only transfer site in any county that does not have a fence around it. Is that accurate?
So we have a, as part of our permit, we talk about plans for security. I mean, security's a big deal. It's a large site and it's a great expense to fence the whole thing. Much of it is wooded. So what we've been doing is securing those access points. So this would be one access point. There's other trails that enter into our site and we're working on securing those locations. Work in progress, but I agree, there's improvements that we need to make and we're engaging in that process.
Thank you, Matt, for coming forth. The chair would then accept a motion to consider the easement agreement?
One other thing I would like to comment on is, so we are going to present this, if the city is, is able to this, then we present it to the county board for their approval at the next, so it'd be contingent, obviously, with the county board's approval.
Parties agree. Thank you. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the agreement with Kooching County for the easement for the eight security fence and portion of the property at the transfer site. Second by Counselor Kraus. Question? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes, motion is carried, easement agreement is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight under new business is the approval of the 2019 renewal of the life insurance policy with Sun Life. No change in the rate schedule. Motion by Counselor Jacksaw. Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, motion is carried and the renewal of the life insurance policy with Sun Life is approved. Thank you. Item number nine is to approve the 2019 long-term disability insurance policy from the Hartford Counsel's pleasure with that long-term disability insurance renewal.
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator?
Just for confirmation, we received proposals from the Hartford and Sun Life. Sun Life was, the rates for the long-term disability were going to go up. Our representative had researched other options and the Hartford came up with an alternative option that was more affordable and the savings with the Hartford was about $1,143 a year. The difference per year was a 21% reduction over what, for a two-year period. So 21% reduction each year over what Sun Life was offering. So that's why staff is recommending we change to the Hartford and we maintain the life insurance through Sun Life.
Wonderful. Make a motion.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the long-term disability insurance policy with the Hartford.
Second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. I would just ask a question with regard to this. Is the, the long-term disability rates based on any experience modification that we would have as a purchaser? Or is it, are we in a larger group? I'm just not sure, I understand why the Sun Life rates went up. So I'm trying to understand if it was something that employees of the city caused or if it's just a--
If you look at the second page, the first page behind the memo page and you see that it is based somewhat on age and so if you have an aging, costs are going to go up and you see that the monthly cost per thousand goes up the older the employee is. So I think that's probably one determining factor as to why it's--
They actually drop it under the group that's 65 to 69.
So do we know if we've had employees out on long-term disability?
They have chosen to buy this product. The city does not pay for this product at all.
At all, okay.
It is a separate piece that they are eligible to purchase if they choose. They are, you know, in a group that Sun Life, actually our agent, assurant, has for us on our behalf that we can elect if our employees choose to. As the time of hire, so they can choose.
It's interesting as you're, if you look at the Hartford, their rates go down for people that are over 60. The others go up.
Probably not a lot of employees in that.
See you discount.
Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion is carried, long-term disability insurance policy with Hartford is approved. Thank you. Item number 10 is to set the permanent office hours for the administration and building inspection departments to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 7:00 AM to noon on Fridays.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion.
Started out saying never. And now here I am, 180 degrees, saying yes.
I like it.
Yeah.
I think the only, the only question I have is, is in the piece that was forwarded with the change in hours, both of those spoke to it being a summer schedule and not, not a permanent schedule. And I, I hope that this is going to work well for everyone in the future. I just, I kind of thought it was going to be a summer schedule and not a permanent one.
So did I. And what persuaded me to go with the year round was the city administrator's thing. It's too confusing to be changing hours. So I thought, well--
That's like daylight saving time.
Kelly made a good point about the contractors coming in early for the permits too.
Yes, yeah.
That sold it for me.
I think there's value both ways, although I was here last Friday, there was three people came to the door on, on Friday, so it-- All right, further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes, motion is carried and the office hours for administration and public inspection departments is approved. Thank you. Item number 11 is to appoint a candidate to the Information Systems Administrator position effective November 1, 2018. That goes down to those guys.
Well, we know one. You get him anyway.
Here are just a few words. The council approved advertising for this particular position, which is Information Systems Administrator. It's a new position that's an outgrowth from, previously we had somebody doing this work on a half-time capacity, the other half was working as an administrative assistant. We had just given the workload and the fact that the, the advances in the technology field, thought it was appropriate to have someone in a full-time capacity in this position. So we had advertised to fill this position. We interviewed applicants on Friday afternoon and based on a conversation, you know, and some reviews that we did today and the end of the day on Friday, we've, we're requesting the city council approve hiring Mr. Clarity for that position. And our staff has contacted him today and he's accepted the position with the terms that we've identified. And so we're asking for the city council's authorization to hire this particular-- so we're asking for the city council's authorization to hire this particular individual. I believe I indicated in the, on the agenda is that the effective date could be November 1st. The person is employed now, needs to give two weeks' notice, so we notify him tomorrow, and two weeks would be...
Council's pleasure, then, with appointing a candidate to the information systems administrator position.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion?
I don't know how good I feel about this. I, I know Jacob Clarity, he's my go-to guy for all my tech needs over at Small Town Tech, and I think I'm going to be at a loss.
Throw a little weight around here.
No, Jacob is a fantastic opportunity for us at the city, and I look forward to having him in that position. It would be fantastic.
Well, we need that filled, from what I'm hearing from city administrators, to get somebody.
I would agree. I think he's a very good choice. I am concerned for the community college, because they have, this is their second change in about a year, and they're diligently to find someone, too. Opportunities are opportunities, so...
There's not a lot of people that, you know, are qualified to fill these positions. It's a high-demand kind of a position, so I think just our proximity to major population centers, I think we're fortunate to...
Both the training and the experience.
Yes.
Okay, further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Motion is carried, and Mr. Jacob Clarity is approved for the information systems administrator position effective November 1, 2018. Thank you. Any other new business? We'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one piece of information I've been communicating with Doug Smith. You might recall that Doug Smith was a representative from the Customs and Border Protection and a North Dakota office in Pembina, and he was organizing a suicide, suicide awareness run for the month of October. In my last communication with him, he indicated that, just given the time of the year, the weather, and trying to get people organized to do that this month was not really feasible, so they were going to push it off to a date sometime in the spring. So just for your information. And I don't have anything else I'd like to add, other than I'm available to respond to questions.
Thank you. Questions for the city administrator?
I have one, because I've had a complaint lately, and so I'm going to have to dig into it. Is noise part of our blight? Is that considered blight noise?
Well, we have a noise ordinance. I would consider it a nuisance ordinance.
Councilor Kraus?
I have one more question. In our conversation on Friday, are they still, I'd received a couple complaints about Ninth Avenue, about the barricades and the barrels. Are they, is Bowman still on? Could you speak to that for a second, please?
Yes, I can. I had a conversation, a couple people contacted me as well as, with some complaints about signs and barricades still erected or within the road right of way, and actually not within the right of way, but within the curb lines of Ninth Avenue after road improvements out there. So I contacted, I did talk with our public works director, and then I, subsequent to that, he indicated that they were going to be out this week to try and remove those signs. I also proactively contacted the general contractor on the job, which is Bowman Construction. I talked to Debbie over there, and she did, called ITS, they're located in Walker, Minnesota. They're planning on being up tomorrow, October 16th, to remove all those barricades and... to do, I believe, on four driveways, and then there's some manholes. Should be removed by ITS tomorrow.
And I assume the cones, though, belong to the city or to Bowman? Okay, those cones, because the cones were all over the right of way. The signs were off to the, to the side of the right of way, but the, the cones, I think because they, they were working on the, around the manhole areas? That's going to be taken care of this week also?
Tomorrow, Tuesday the 16th, they're going to be up to remove all that stuff, and that was contracted to ITS, so...
But the bituminous work that needs to be done around the...
She told me that, well, the public works director had, had talked with Bowman Construction, and they were going to start up their bituminous plan today and leave it running through Wednesday, and they were going to finish up that work on Ninth Avenue. If the signs are being removed tomorrow, I expect the bituminous work to be done tomorrow as well. An email out, it's a little after 3:00 today, just updating you with that in an email, and I don't know if you've all...
Quality of the set has a lot to do with the weather. So they're lucky, because we're going to have 53, 53-degree weather at the end of the week, so we should have enough bituminous.
Further questions for the city administrator? Thank you. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, council, a couple items that have been ongoing to report with regards to the teepee. I've had ongoing discussions with both the current owner and the prospective buyers, and some movement in their requests of the city that, and I was in court all day today and will be tomorrow morning, but tomorrow afternoon, I hope to get together with Administrative Anderson and discuss some of those things, but we're working on that. The other thing, the annexation, I've had a meeting with the county attorney, and we'll be working on an orderly annexation agreement, and we'll get back to the council with that in the near future. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for the city attorney? Chief Maston?
Mr. Mayor, council? Nothing out of the ordinary for the month of September for the police department. As you know, we held our interviews for our part-time patrol position and made that section. Officers were busy getting back in the routine of school, with school getting back into session and having our, our presence around the schools in the mornings and afternoons. As far as our day-to-day activity, we generated 533 calls for service, which is very different from last year. We had 175 traffic stops of that. We issued 35 citations. We had 24 medical assists, took 19 people into custody, and generated 95 new cases for the month of September. In review of those cases, calls for service, I don't see anything out of the ordinary, nothing, nothing to be...
Questions for Chief Maston, please? Very well done. Thank you.
For the month of September, we had six fire department call-outs. Three were within the city and three in the rural. We did have a, I guess one of the city responses was a canceled call. Had our monthly meeting and training on the 20th, where we did ropes knots, rescue equipment, and personal protective equipment. Ambulance for the month of September was 91, or 61 911 calls, 44 transfers, for a total of 105 runs, as compared to the same month in 2017, 139 runs. That brings the totals up for the year at the end of September to 1,053 ambulance runs combined, 911s and transfers. We did have a meeting and training on the 12th, and a regular business meeting and training as well.
Good. Questions for Chief Manassa?
Mayor?
Please.
I would just add that the chief and I have been coordinating with the energy company, and, and we're going to have a report here for the city council at the November 19th city council. We talked about that, and they were in the process of preparing something and having somebody available to enter the council on that.
Energy?
The gas.
Oh, right.
A couple meetings ago.
The other thing I want to say is that I've been, I've had the opportunity to participate with Adam Manassa at some discussions in the ambulance department, and it's been very enlightening for me. I think they've been valuable meetings. It couldn't have happened without you. Adam has brought forth some things that changed the way the ambulance, has impact on the way the ambulance needs to be operated, as, as it was in the past. It's different today. So just want to thank you for all the time and the contribution to those meetings. We're going to have some more of them, and I think they're, I don't know how you feel, but I thought, with your participation especially, I thought they were very fruitful.
Definitely a step in our direction.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
I would say congratulations, and are you getting any sleep?
Little bit. Thank you. It's been a month, so...
He's perfect, by the way.
Thank you.
Just throwing that out there. My wife, if he ever disappears, don't come to my house. Your son is perfect.
Further questions? Thank you again, Chief.
To, if I may...
Yes, please.
I would add, for, just a council's information, we had authorized the Phase 2 analysis of the ambulance department, and Mr. Metro is going to be in town on the 28th, which is a Sunday, and he'll be working with our staff in the ambulance and fire department all week, and then heading out on the following Saturday, I think it's November 3rd, so... Moving forward with that work.
Well, thank you. Great. Thank you, Chief. Building inspector hires.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. Building department, and the report that you have in front of you is kind of a little deceiving right now, because we did add zoning to it. That happened before Don left from his new IT position, so there's no documentation in here yet, because the, the information we have is, is to October 1st, so we will, we will start progressing, and be able to show how much activity we're having in the zoning category. That's why that one shows nothing right now. It's not, nothing that happened, but it will document after this date and collect from that point. We're actually sitting pretty good. We've got, the, the permit count is actually sitting right about where we normally would be throughout a normal year. You do see on 16, we were at 90, we're at 76 now, but 90 was a, was a big... 70s, 80s is pretty... Look at it, we, the validations, they change, they vary because of projects, and I guess the one thing that I would like to add is, to date up to the third quarter, we have collected 62,496 and 43 cents in permits and, and plan review fees for this.
On here?
No, it's not. It's a separate sheet. That one actually calculates differently than the way this was formatted when it was laid out, so I, I could have, I will try to get you that sheet next time, so I have that right in your packet, but this time I didn't get it.
What's been the impact of the fee rate increase, have we seen?
Quite an increase. Last year, just to give you an idea, I can go to the dates. I don't have it split up in like the third quarters or anything like that, so it'd be at the end of the year. Last year, last year, our total was about $24,000, which was quite a bit of difference.
2016?
2016 was 54,000, so we did it up.
We're at 62,000 at the end of the third quarter.
Third quarter, correct.
From 24 last year?
Yes. And, and the big, the big thing that I've actually had pretty good comments on is, we're probably getting true numbers, or before you get the, the one person that wouldn't want to tell you what the labor costs were, and labor is figured into the permit fees. By going to the flat rate fees, like for the siding and roofing, we're actually getting honest numbers of what your roof is going to cost, because a permit is 61 or 65 dollars, and they're telling us the true amount, where before we were probably getting 1,500, and they wanted to pay on that amount instead of what it is. So now they'll give you a true number that, without questioning what the project is related to, which helps.
So we did it there.
I think we did very well, yes. I think it was a very smart move. I think it made a lot of equality across the board, fairness for everybody, because everybody now knows this is what it's going to be. They don't have to question it, where before it was, one person may say the project was $5,000, and the other guy doing the same project was actually at 10, so we had to be in right onboard. Other ones weren't telling the true numbers, but...
Forward with the recommendation you did all the background work on. So I appreciate that.
Most cities have tried to do that. It's, it's, it's just a, more uniformity of, of the fee. I believe it's a real good move.
I have one further question, Kelly, and that would be with regard to someone taking and getting a building permit. They can do their own work on their property, and then do we question whether or not they're using a certified person contractor for Minnesota?
Basically, what we, Mayor, to answer that question, yes. If the homeowner chooses to do their own work, they actually sign a waiver form that basically states that they are the contractor. Though one place that you have to type, typically educate the people in is, they still sometimes will hire a contractor that is not licensed, so we do have to tell them, you are the contractor. So the state recovery fund is not available to them if they have issues, so... that we utilize. And, so you can do the work yourself, and your, everything's fine, but if you hire someone that is not licensed correctly or bonded the way they're supposed to be, you'll be responsible for the work that person does, so it's kind of...
I haven't any contractors, that's what I've been hearing.
We are lacking in, I think they're getting a little light, but they're not as light as people think. A lot of people think that they can call, and I can say this from experience of being one prior to this position, is a lot of times, especially this type of year, people will call and think that you can be there tomorrow, and our contractors basically are spread out. A lot of them are a year to two years out. They're doing years, you know, projects that are there, so... I know one that's not working, or can come to your house right away. It's probably either for a small project, or they're not going to last very long, because you know...
Very good. Administrator, please.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. So Kelly, what kind of feedback are you getting from contractors?
Actually, I've had a very good rapport with them. They like it a lot, because what they do is they come in early in the morning, prior to going to the lumberyards. So what they'll do is they'll come in and get their permits, and then they'll start the job after they pick up their materials. Prior to that, to be honest with you, a lot of times they'd go to the lumberyard, start the job, and then call me at lunchtime. So you had that gap of, geez, you guys coming in for your permit, oh yeah, I'm going to do that at lunch. Well, we're not seeing that now. And to be honest with you, the administrative staff that we have right now, Lisa is doing an excellent job helping me with the permits and keeping me on board.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. All right. Thank you.
Keeping him on board, that's...
That's pretty tough, because she does a good job, so...
Commissioner Brokaw?
I'm listening, Sheriff.
Thank you. Reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
Two things, Drowba. The first thing is, is part of our, our plan to educate the public on the sales and use tax. I made a video. I used the slides that the city had offered. I made it very clear that it was not an official city video, but I did put one out yesterday at about 10 o'clock PM. In the past 20 hours, we've had a little, under 1,000 people have watched the video in town. It's been shared 26 times, and with that being said, it's been nothing but positive on the education piece of it. It does outline that we do have our next meeting on the sales and use tax on October 23rd, and I think the people, as they get the information, are very okay with, with the choice, whether they, they choose to vote yes or choose to vote no. I think they feel educated on... vote no. I think they feel educated on, on what we did. And I think we, as a city council, did a very, very good job at our last public information meeting on trying to give out the information as unbiased as we could by just giving out facts. And I think we're doing a great job on educating the public. And that vote is on November 6th. I will not be here for our next city council meeting, which is on Monday, November 5th. My family and I will be on vacation, so.
Got a vote, though?
Already have.
Video's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work, thank you. Any, any other reports on?
I have a question as a follow-up to Counselor Drowba. How, I mean, exactly how aggressive can I be with the information of the sales tax? I don't want to cross any boundaries as far as being accused of being a promoter.
Administrator, I think the word is advocate?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, council, not advocate for a position, either a vote for, I guess, you can educate the public about it, but you can't, you can't advocate for a position.
That is
That's state law.
On an individual or in a group setting, or both?
As an elected official of the city?
Yes. Not advocate for a position that way.
It can be really loud. You have a choice.
Oh, yes.
My suggestion, Tim?
And I will say on that video, it took me a handful of times to go through it and make sure that I wasn't giving out anything other than facts. And I think that that's very important. I stated the information on, on $800,000 is what we would hope to generate based off the sales tax. And if we were to levy that same dollar amount of $800,000, it would be a 23% levy increase. Just gave that information. So, I think we can do a very good job about educating the, the citizens of international halls without saying, you need to vote yes, you need to vote no. But I think that the more people that we can get into this room on the 23rd, and more people, I know you have a luncheon learn tomorrow, or we have a luncheon learn?
No.
No?
The chamber. Someone coming in to speak about sales tax.
Okay.
I have no idea what, what that
Larson Allen, it's something Larson Allen, it used to be Larson Allen Wisher. He had now they've been bought by a national firm. Clifton Larson Allen. But it's, it's not specific to our proposal, just in general. I mean, it's great for us to help educate the public, but.
I think Counselor Jacksaw, the discussion you and I had today with regard to the alternatives. If, if the sales tax doesn't pass, what alternatives does the city council have in trying to make the improvements that are needed in infrastructure? Very limited, very limited. One of those certainly is increasing the property tax levy.
And the other one is, don't do anything and kiss the city goodbye, right? We don't want to do that, so. I mean, you can't just let your, I know, I'm a little bit dramatic here, but you can't let your streets just crumble indefinitely, and the water lines get, you know, I mean, you, you, we have to take action on this. And so the alternative to do nothing, that's always one of the alternatives when you do a cost-benefit analysis. That's what, you know, I mean, that's not really a real alternative. We have to do something.
Thank you. Further under committees? Not anyone in the audience wishes to approach the council at this time? Thank you. As Counselor Drowba reminded us, the, the next public information meeting on the sales and use tax will be Tuesday, October the 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. The next regular city council meeting, Monday, November the 5th, 2018, at 4:30 PM. And the general election is Tuesday, beginning at 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM on November the 6th. Nothing further to come before the council at this time? We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.